We all set? Okay, I would like to welcome all of you here tonight and it's nice to have a, even you Rachel, you're welcome. It's nice to have a full house and uh, obviously a lot going on tonight. Carrie asked if she could make a introduction first thing and so please.
I'd like you all to meet Molly Mueller. She is the Deputy Director for the Utah League of Citizens in Council and she's here as our guest and we'll be here for our swearing in ceremony and we just really appreciate all the things that she does and works on behalf of our city. And we're coming up on the legislative session and the lady is working 24/7 basically on all of the different, all of the different bills that are being presented and shared with us and I appreciate her being here and as a board member of the league, she and I work closely together.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks Carrie. Okay, um, so why don't we start with our invocation Janet if you, sorry, I, I was thinking we were going into a work session and not right into the council meeting, so that was an uninspired introduction that Carrie gave because we hadn't prayed first, but hopefully it made the point. Okay Janet, will you uh, say the prayer and then Carrie will you lead us in the pledge? Thanks.
Dear kind and precious family father, we're so grateful that we can gather here this evening to discuss city business and to have the ear of our citizens and so that we can be mindful of their wants and needs in our decisions. Please help that this meeting will be calm and that people will be cooperative and that we can work together. We're so grateful for this opportunity to serve when this was everybody will be safe as a snowstorm comes our way. Say these things in the H.
Amen.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we will enter the public comment portion of our meeting. If there's anybody here that cares to make a public comment, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, we will close unless there's somebody online. Can't see anybody, can you Jody? Okay, that's, that's it then, that's everybody. All right, then we'll close the public comment portion and we will move on to item five, the swearing in of newly elected city council members. So we will go in order of how they're stacked up on my desk. Ben, do you please come on up and uh?
Is everybody here for you?
No, not yet.
Okay Ben.
Okay.
I'm gonna be down on the list.
That's fine, that's fine.
Is everyone here for you?
Think so.
Okay.
Mayor would you like mine?
Oh, thank you. So this, this is actually, I don't think I've ever sworn anybody in, but it would basically just be reading that oath, so if you would raise your right hand and repeat that.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations Brian.
Thank you.
Welcome. Did it read that or was it all signed? Carrie?
Right. Down this way from my end.
Perfect. I won't.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, this state, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Then if I could get that side, we'll give time. Make it official. Well, we'll come back to him. All right, well, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with the two of you and look forward to continuing doing so and Brian, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, um, if anyone sees Dave show up, please let me know. Um, so we'll just go on to item seven and approval of the JDE assignment order to complete a pavement management assessment. Ted?
So this is a continued effort in our ongoing pursuit of an asset management plan where we can better track and manage our city assets such water, sewer, roads, stuff like that. So some months ago, actually I think it was before I started here full time, um, the Joe, the city, well, the acting city engineers at the time, Jones and Emile, was asked to put together kind of a cost to do a pavement management plan. What this plan will do is it will basically, they will go through and evaluate all of our roads in the city, determine the condition of them based on pavement practices, ash toe regulations, stuff like that, and what treatments would be necessary for each of the roads, what's your prior, what the priority roads are and costs for those corrective actions. So this will build basically a, a management plan that we can track over time and start with our highest priority projects and start trying to be proactive with, with our roads in replacing, repairing, or whatever takes place. So this will be all tracked in, the city's put together, we're putting together a GIS for those of you familiar with software platform, GIS system that will have all these assets in it. We've already got our water system in it that we're tracking. We're working on getting our sewer in it and this will be another asset that will be added to that GIS system for asset management.
Ted, we had a guy come in and give a presentation on, on road maintenance and things of that nature. Do you know if that is the methodology that we will be going forward with or are we going to have a different methodology coming from Jones and Emile?
So some of the practices he discussed will be like how we evaluate the roads, the conditions, the assessment, uh, in, he, he kind of caught a, as kind of a small portion of that. Now the treatment, he, he was representing one specific company, so his treatment was one specific treatment. This will look at all the various treatments that can be applied depending on the road condition and it will look at how each road should be treated independently and may not all be the same application.
I guess my main question is are we gonna, you know, do the maintenance kind of a higher priority and then repair secondary, or are we going to kind of do more conventional and flip it and do just repair and then let everything else kind of degrade until it needs the full treatment?
Yeah, so the idea that he, that he talked about, the philosophy is you try and manage those that are manageable right now, those that are, can't be managed, that are just too far gone, um, you put those lower down the priority list just because you want to save the ones you can and that costs you less money in the end.
Thank you.
So is this, this assessment gonna give kind of the technical specifications that we can go out to, to RFQ, um, and, and multiple companies can, can meet those specifications? Is that how this, this will kind of lay it out for us?
So this will give us the treatment application for the road. Um, it, they don't, they'll give us the type of treatment that should be applied, the technical specifications come during the final design of the project, but it'll tell us whether it needs a full replacement, um, what type of pavement's recommended, whether it can be chip seal, crack seal, um, rotor mill, um, whatever the, whatever the repair suggestion is, um, for each of the roads. And then when we look at doing that project specifically, we'll prepare the actual technical information for that project.
Okay. So that will, what will be used here by RFQ?
Yeah, this will be, yeah, this will be used to help, help us kind of prioritize and start managing your repair replacement of the roads.
And this comes out of our existing budget?
Yes, comes out of our roads budget.
A few years ago, we were given a document of a study that wasn't to this level, but it, it was road prioritization and pictures and all kinds of things that was part of this. Would that document help them to have to start with? I'm sure Jody could find it.
So I believe that was one done by, correct me if I'm wrong, that was done by Eli Eli.
I think so.
Yeah, it was.
And it was a kind of a small.
Yeah.
Piece of what, uh, the overall scope of this would be, um, and such, you know, should be considered. I don't know how applicable it'll be, we'll have to look at it and see. Yeah. And I have seen that document.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, any other questions for Ted? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item eight, approval of conditional use application Summit Creek seven sales office. Wayne, is this, you're taking this one?
Just, just a question, so approval, does that mean that we need to have a vote since this isn't, since this isn't a work session?
Right, so.
Are we approving it as we go?
We, we, those will be down, um, in the resolutions down the list, so this is just.
No, we do not have a resolution for the JDE.
Oh, this is not, okay.
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I was asking.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve it, unless you're talking to it.
That's a compelling case you've made Wayne.
Oh, I thought we were talk, still talking about Ted's.
Do we have to approve Ted's?
Yeah, we have to approve Ted's.
Ted would have to be approved, yeah.
So we need to do that.
Yeah, before Wayne talks about the next one is what I'm saying.
Well, so yeah, I, I guess this is just a little confusing because I, I was assuming that, uh, we would be voting on, we would discuss the business and then we would vote, but you're right, it doesn't appear that it is down further on the list, so, okay. Yeah, all right.
So I make a motion that we approve it.
No, good catch. That being the case then, uh, so wait, you, you made the motion Carrie?
Uh huh.
Okay, and seconded by council member Lunt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you.
Do you want to know where the money's coming from, are we good?
He said it was in the budget, do you want to show us where?
Yeah, just real quick, um, there's 15,000 left in, in professional technical, we'll just need to move a little bit from either roads maintenance or general streets maintenance up, uh, the mayor can do that with his authority, but I just wanted to let you guys know that um, we will need to take just a little bit from one of those other line items.
Okay. Thank you Chris.
Thanks Chris. Okay, now Wayne.
In your packet, there is a conditional use application submitted by Summit Creek. This is a renewal, one that they previously submitted, it's for their sales office, which is located at the office in 35, uh, so it's, um, basically the same, no real changes made to it, um, conditional use permit has to be renewed every year. Well, uh, behind and doing it this year, but uh, that's, that's what this is, is to renew that sales office conditionals. Any questions about that that I can answer?
Okay.
Has there been any issues? I don't see a problem.
All right, so we get a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by council member Hilliard?
I'll second it.
Seconded by council member Hutchings, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, uh, city council assignments. All right, so I have had an opportunity to talk to each of you and again, one will express thanks for your willingness to serve, so, um. With respect to the assignments, uh, just starting at the top, so I will continue with SESD, uh, mountain land association of governments, council of governments and personnel, Ben, and so we will have to appoint you to mayor pro temp separately, but in addition to that, emergency management interim director and South Utah Valley Solid Waste District, Brian, Public Works Committee liaison, planning commission liaison, South Utah Valley Municipal Water Association, Mountain Evo Water Agency, and this is not on the list, but Parks, Trails and Recreation as we also discussed, and Doral, uh, Citizen Wildlife Protection, Public Safety, Central Utah 911, Janet, Events and Volunteers, Finance Committee, Communications Committee and Public Information Officer, and Carrie, Community Development Committee Liaison, Utah Valley Animal Shelter and Public Works Committee Council Liaison.
We know we can email that list to you so we can get it posted?
Absolutely. Okay, well, this should come as no surprise to any of you, but if anybody has any questions, not, then, um, Jody, this is not something we vote on or this is something we vote on?
Vote on.
Okay, all right, well then, so let it be written, so let it be done. All right, a, a little bit, uh, maybe more controversial topic, item 10, the sale of the 2005 International Snowplow Truck. Uh, so Ted, why don't you lead this off and we'll see where it goes from there.
What'd you call him?
Wingman?
Oh, wingman.
Um, so a lot of you probably saw the emails that were going around, I think you got sent the emails from the mayor about the sale of this, uh, this called Big O, uh, the snowplow truck. It's been a discussion over the last several months, it, it, it kind of got initiated in, um, when we start talking about snow plowing for the year is what is the need or the use of that truck? The truck is, um, in talking with the snowplow group, um, the truck is, is probably available to use about 50% of the time. We spend a lot of, I, I guess there's a lot of time and money spent on maintenance of that truck to keep it operational. Generally, it's used for widening the roads. Uh, we use the two main plow trucks for clearing the roads, that one comes back after and is used for widening and that's one, if it's available or not under maintenance and two, if there's someone to drive it. We have, over the last, course of the last year, year and a half have lost some of the drivers that drive that truck, Corbett and Val, and so we're, we now have two, two people on the snowplow group that can or will drive the truck. So it's just not getting used to its full potential, one, and you know, looking at the cost versus use of the truck, it's probably not panning out. So in talking with the, with the snowplow group, the preference is that we would, uh, sell that truck and then use those funds to invest in some better snowplow equipment. We've got a couple of snowplows also sitting down there that haven't been used forever, a salt spreader, a few things we can sell in the snowplow group and possibly look at investing those in another, uh, utility truck that could be used to help plow the cul-de-sacs and stuff like that. That would be, you know, operational and newer vehicle, uh, more convenient to use and more drivers could use it. So that was the topic of, of why, or why this was brought up and so we want to bring it to the council, um, to get the council's feedback on, on selling this truck. It is, you know, admittedly, it's, it's a tool in the arsenal that we use and this last snowstorm, one of our snowplows went down, broke a ram, um, and, uh, so we, we were, got Big O out and, and were able to use it during that event. Now that, I doesn't, I don't know that, that happens real often, but, but, um, it was useful. Yeah, yeah, and if you talk to this snowplow group, none of them like to drive it, there's only a couple who will. Now, y- you probably saw Chris's email, uh, you know, he thought maybe there was some, some benefit to it, but the question is, is it really worth the cost of keeping it versus what we're using it for and can use it? As, as Dave had said in his email, you know, it's, it's availability is probably about 50%, uh, when it's not being repaired or maintained, the cost and, and even then, that's if there's a driver available, which we're down to two, so that could cut it down to 25% of the time it would be used, you know? So, wanted to bring that up.
Just a quick question, so we mostly use it to widen the streets, which last year was really needed because we got so much snow, so what equipment would we be able to get that would also widen the road because our smaller trucks don't have that capacity?
No, and that's a good, that's a good discussion, so I, I believe, and I may need Dave up here to give me some of the details and. You can tell his passion. I believe there's only. I believe there's only two roads that we widen, two primary or three new.
Last year when we needed it.
Dave, you gotta, you gotta.
So last year when we needed the plow to plow the sides of the roads to widen them, it was broken. Parts were being made, jerry-rigged to get back on the road, um, and that's the reality. So we actually jerry-rigged another device, broke two of those to widen the roads. There's other options that we should look at, uh, you know, from a council perspective. So, you know, if there can be funds and/or those options looked at, we can still widen the roads when it's needed, uh, so there's, there's, there's things that we could do there Carrie for sure.
So Dave, what, just you mentioned those options in your email, what, what are you?
So one would be getting rid of a lot of the stuff that is used rarely and that is most of the time broken and then get something like a backhoe that would be multipurpose.
That's what I was thinking.
Cause that could move around the city really easily, where today the equipment that we can use, it doesn't. The backhoe could be used to repair shoulders, it could be used to widen the roads, it could be used to load salt and on and on and on, something like that. Once again, that's not for me, I'm just, that's just one of the options. The other one is to contract with somebody that has a grader and have them come up at certain times and do that. And again, that's a cost, but everything's gonna cost something at some point, so.
Great, thank you. Yeah, uh, you'll need to speak into the microphone, but please.
Yeah, this is my sixth year plowing and Big O has been down more than it's been functioning. Those that have driven it in the past have done it. In my opinion, and in a little bit of apparel situation at times, the brakes have, the brakes are okay now. Right now it's in working condition, now's the good time to sell it. It spends most of the season under repair in some form or fashion. And again, last year and, and prior years, when we need it, we don't know it, and when we need it, it, most of the time it's not available, so.
Well, and to add to that, when it sits out here and then our citizens don't see it going and it's a big snowstorm, it's kind of a false hope that something's gonna happen and they don't realize that it's, it's not, it's not in service. And so it just kind of, it doesn't build confidence, I guess.
Well, that brings up another point too, the reason it's out here is because we're running out of room in our facilities, public works facilities, so just freeing up some space and getting something that is a little more usable, um, so the idea.
No, go ahead, I'll, I'll ask after.
Oh no, so, so the idea is, is, you know, council discuss it with, if, if this is the direction we want to go, we would put it up on the auction. The money that comes from that truck would then be kept in the snowplow budget along with some of these plows and a few other things we're gonna sell and be used like Dave said to, to purchase some, some better equipment that would be multipurpose.
So the one, so the widening of the roads, I think that I'm, I'm satisfied with the answer and the possible solution. There was another comment made about the visibility, the high profile of the orange truck that the others don't have, is that, uh, is that a concern for any others or is that something that, uh, is not really?
For me, plow one and. For me, plow one and two, you don't have a visibility problems.
That comment actually came from somebody who drives, drives both of them, so I have to say that he has a perspective that most of us don't.
Yeah.
The driver plows.
Yeah.
Came from Chris.
No.
I don't know in, in our city if, if we really need to invest in something of, of that sort, but I think Chris would be a great person to have involved in that, that discussion, um, because I read his and it actually brought up a lot of, you know, a lot of thoughts on my side. I've been pushing Ted for a couple of months now, if we're gonna sell it, don't wait till the end of the season, we need to sell it now. I had two highway patrol, uh, uh, Sergeant Dustin actually had two of the highway patrol DOT people come up here to do a full inspection on that truck and there are a couple of things that if it were not in a municipality would actually take it off the road.
Oh, really?
They're not big safety items, they're reflectors and lights type of thing, um, but it passed its inspection, this is the time that we want to sell it, just like John said, um, and, and this is the time that people are gonna be looking for it because right now is when we're getting snow.
Those of us that plow.
So can I ask a question? Because we, we pushed really hard to approve the new snowplows about a year ago, um, do we know what the ETA is on those?
I think Chris is gonna talk about that. Chris has got some information.
Yeah, they're here. They're in Salt Lake City right now, they're 60, 60 days out from getting to our city because they've gotta build them now with the snowplow equipment.
Are we still claiming COVID, is that why?
I wrote two emails and had to delete them because I needed to relax a little bit because it was not. So I'll, I'll contact them tomorrow, but it's very frustrating that they're coming at the end of the snowplow season, working with Bank, Bank of Utah, uh, about the financing to see if they can push the financing off till next year.
Well, it's just frustrating because we pushed so hard so that we wouldn't be in the situation that we were in on Sunday.
Yeah.
But fortunately, we have a miracle worker, a couple of miracle workers.
Yeah, you gotta thank Craig, is Craig? Yeah, yeah. Called him like on a Sunday afternoon, he was up here and got the parts and had it fixed last night, so. He. He was right on it and.
Yeah, we'll find you.
Yeah, well, thank you Craig, we appreciate that.
I, I guess the recommendation from the, from the snowplow side of things is, is their, their preference is to sell it and get something that would be better used and not sitting aside all the time.
So, Chris Helby said that, that we wouldn't get over 10,000, what are you going to be asking as you put it out for sale?
I, what, so I, did the blue book say it would go for over 10?
So there's a, there's a truck blue book and then I went and compared what those style of trucks are going for right now and they're between eight and 15 and the condition with that bed falling off and hitting the roundabout last year and some of the other stuff, I can't imagine we're gonna get a whole lot for it.
How many trucks are available for sale right now, Chris?
There's, there's a lot, but there's not a whole lot that year because it is a little bit older.
And I will say the visibility thing, from a driver's perspective, probably great. I don't know how well they see passengers and this comes from someone that had to jump off in a snowbank one time when the, when it come down the road at me and I had to dive off into a snowbank, it's coming down the wrong side.
That may have not been visibility issue, that may have.
Yeah, it may have been intentional. I won't say who was driving, but, uh.
So mayor, I, I took Jones' advice and I've ridden in Big O and I'll just, one word, terrifying. Yeah.
For you and all those around.
And the driver. No, it was, it was.
And the cost of a driver to drive it is $4,000 to get their CDL. We have a driver, two drivers now that can drive it, so if we lose one of those drivers, somebody's gonna have to come up with four grand or have a CDL already in their possession to drive it.
And I, I just want to say, I, I do appreciate Chris trying to make sure that it's properly vetted, I think that it's a fair point, but it doesn't sound, not, not you Chris.
No, Chris Jensen, he had great points on both sides.
I, I thought Chris Jensen made good points, um, but i- if, if it's something that is just not really a viable option, then we need to cut and run, I think. Okay, any other questions for Ted on that?
Well, I think for me, mayor, the biggest, the biggest need we have as a plow team is a new service truck. So the one with the V plow that does all of our cul-de-sacs and all of our kind of flat roads in the city, um, you cannot push snow, and I'm talking a half inch of snow on the road coming up within hills drive faster than four or five mile an hour. And so we need something that can service that need more so than I think what Big O offers the city.
Okay.
Um, I think also, I don't know if we're, last year, that cost the city how much each time we had it out? Yes.
Probably four or five thousand dollars.
That was the figure on average, if we took the CDL licenses that we had to pay for, if we took then the maintenance costs and the number of times it went out, we can't afford to spend five grand a storm on one machine.
Cost of the employees to fix it.
Roll the dice.
Yeah, so I agree.
I think getting rid of it makes a lot of sense. I think last year to widening the roads side of things, we used the Kubota with the snow blower more to plow, to widen the roads than we did Big O, so I think there's options there.
Okay.
We want a Kubota with the snow blower.
It, it's a very large motion, I'll make that motion to sell, to approve the sale of Big O.
I'll second it.
Motion by council member Hilliard, seconded by council member Malkovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries, thanks Ted.
Thank you Ted and dude.
He is kind of an icon though of the city.
Yeah, yeah, well, we can all get a picture taken in front of it before we sell it.
I'm just saying, it's been around for a minute.
Yeah. All right, well, let's see how we're doing on time, not bad, still no Dave Pratt.
Dave is in Vegas. He will not be making.
Okay, well.
So we have to table it.
It's okay, it's not that. It's okay. It's not that big. Thanks, O'Brien. Okay, well, let's move on to item 11 and 12. Chris?
Yeah, I don't think any more than what was in the emails as far as the check rules and the financials, where we're doing good this year. We're sitting very, very well as far as revenues and expenses. We have received most of the sales tax monies now that January 1 has come in. And so the, the report's coming up in the next month. We'll, we'll show you those totals.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Um, yeah, I saw a reimbursement for a card for Lance. Is he still doing things with the city? I thought he was done at the end of the fire season.
So they had, they had a few expenses that they found receipts in their pockets and things like that.
Okay.
And they're kind of late on that, so we, we, we looked at that as well, fueled charges and stuff like that.
Yeah, I just wondered.
Just a reconciliation of a 30-day credit card.
And the state is reversions for some of those items.
Okay.
Hey, anything else? All right, thanks, Chris. And I get a motion for those items.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay.
Both.
Both.
October and November, check disbursements. I looked through them, so.
I, I talked with Chris extensively with them. Chris, Chris and I have had a few conversations, so I will second that.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lunt and a second by Councilmember Hutchings. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, this motion's carry. Item 13, appointment of a Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to recommend, and Ben has agreed to accept another year as Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you for everything you do, and so.
I'll motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinniston. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Was that an opposed?
Four ayes and one reluctant.
Yeah.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Ben.
Feel supported.
I just had you yelp at time.
Ben, we're going to move her back to the other side.
All right, item 14, appointment of an alternate on the planning commission. Wayne?
John Wallace has been serving as our alternate. And due to some change in assignments and his new assignment with the fire department, he felt that his time was, would be challenging to continue in, as an alternate for the planning commission. So we, I asked John for some recommendations that he might have, somebody that he knew that may be willing to, to serve in that capacity and would have some skills that are associated with it. And he recommended Simon Kirschman. I'd like to ask him to stand with his wife there in the back there. He lives down in Four Seasons, been a resident here for, for a couple of years. We included some information, some biographical information on him in your packages that you have tonight. So I, with all that in mind, I would like to recommend that he be approved as an alternate on the planning commission. So if you have any questions, you're welcome to, he can answer better than I can. Or if any questions about the process, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Hey, big, big thanks.
Yeah, thank you to you, John, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Thanks to both of you.
Yeah, why do you want? Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm sure. We look forward to your expertise.
We appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do all our recruiting here tonight, right?
We'll show them.
Okay, well, can I get a motion? To make that approval?
I'll make a motion. We approve him for the alternate planning commission position.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lunt.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Now you're officially locked in. Thank you. All right, item 15, a proposal to amend the Woodland Hills City Consolidated Fee Schedule. So just as a little background, there, there are some parties that are fairly resistant to paying certain monies owed to cities. So one of the things that we wanted to include was interest charges so that it would offer some incentive for people to reconcile their accounts quickly. And then another one concerns waste management. So waste management is going to start charging us for lost cans and we're not exactly sure how that is going to work, but it's something that we.
Who's defining a can is lost?
To the residents?
Great questions. Yeah, so that, that would be passed along. It would, yeah, it would pass along.
But I feel like, like, because were they going to do it for broken ones too, or, because I feel like they break my can.
They do. They, sometimes they'll put it and then will fall off or they crash.
Yeah, I mean, I don't break my can. I'm careful with it. They break my can.
I've hit a couple, John.
You know, that explains some questions I have about how it ended up in snowbank.
And I only drive on your road just to hit them.
Just to hit the cans, and you hit them early Tuesday morning, so they're old.
Yeah. She's not even on my route.
Well, yeah, I mean, there, there's obviously some unanswered questions, but it is something that I, I do feel is the right course to pass that along if, if, if it does turn up missing. And then when you're talking damage, if it's something that, I mean, there, there is, I think, wiggle room to dispute if you can make the argument that it's just normal wear and tear, but, but it's something that the city is currently absorbing, and so we think it's justifiable to pass that on to those. Maybe people will take really good care of their cans, so.
Going to see lots of duct tape on mine, I think.
Well, I've seen some that are blackened, and that makes me wonder if people are roasting new outlets in their garbage cans or something, but.
Really?
Well, I've seen the blackened ones. I really didn't.
Okay.
They're roasting pitch. All right, well, can we get a motion to approve those changes to our fee schedule?
They, they're legal, right? I mean, we've checked that.
I, so I did some research on, on other cities and these are definitely in line.
Okay, that's good to know.
Definitely in line with what other cities charge, but I mean, some of them are even higher than that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it's.
My only worry. Okay.
That's a really good question, though.
There were, and I, I couldn't find any law on it, but I did find that 2% is pretty.
Okay.
Don't we have at least one or two that are several years?
But it's 2%.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, right, currently there are several years.
And there's not, that's, that's the problem is there's not a huge incentive for them to pay is because it's interest, an interest-free loan. So that's, I think, what is at least in part behind this.
I'm just always hesitant to charge more money, but I, but, but we do have some that are.
Yeah.
Old.
Interest would start occurring today, right, on past due.
Yeah, it's not like we would backdate it.
No, we can't.
So I'll, I'll move to amend the Woodland Hills City Consolidated Fee Schedule.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hutchings?
I'll second his motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinniston. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That carries. Appointing individuals to serve on the Public Works Committee. Ted?
Yeah, thanks. So we wanted to revamp the Public Works Committee just a little bit this year. We've lost some of our committee members from our public, who was on our Public Works Committee. And we also wanted to kind of reduce the number of committee members because it was just getting too large and sometimes more is not better. Anyway, so we have recommended that there be four community members at large on the committee, and we've invited Mark Sovine, who was the committee, previous committee chair, to continue to serve on the Public Works Committee. Paul MacArthur, former council member, also has a legal background on the Public Works Committee. Nate Pack, who is an engineer and will also help on the Public Works Committee. And then Steve Johns, new member to our community, but also is, has kind of a, Steve Johns, and he has a building background. So we've invited those four. They've all accepted the opportunity to be on, opportunity to be on the committee.
Will you be the chair?
No, so in addition to the four at large, and we usually try and get a committee chair from one of those four, we also have two council members and Public Works Director and the snowplow Dave, basically who oversees the snowplows, are also on the committee.
You said Mark chairs that, right?
Well, he did chair that. He is, he is asked that if someone else is willing to step up as chair, that he would, he would relinquish that and give that up to someone else. So I don't think there's been a decision yet as who will chair it this year. But stay tuned.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, very quick motion and second, Councilmember Hilliard and Councilmember Malkovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, that motion carries. And, and thanks to those individuals. Mark, I see you. I don't see anybody else. Oh, thank you.
There's Steve. Yeah. Yeah, you better stand up. There he is, the elf, or excuse me.
You look, remind me of an elf that I saw.
By the way, he'll do anything the city asks.
Right, yeah, no, I've seen that. Put a guy in tights.
Oh, my word.
All right, thank you, Bill. Okay, item 17, resolution 24, 2024-7, wanting an individual to serve on the Finance Committee. So Tim Larson, he, his term expired. I've talked to Mike Taylor and I've talked to Tim, and Tim is willing to serve another term, and so I would like to recommend him for that. And then we've also asked Aaron Lowe to serve, and, and both of them were. Aaron showed up just in time to hear his name read.
He's been here the whole time, even hiding behind Mark. Yeah.
I, I didn't, I didn't notice it, but.
Did you stand up, Aaron? There you go.
That's Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. And so that will be, the, the Finance Committee will include you, Janet, and, and Chris, and so Mike Taylor, Aaron, Tim, and Drew Jordan, since then.
So he'll probably be sending out an email. I think we're going to meet and discuss the snowplow and the selling of the plow equipment. So it comes from High Country. That's his email, so watch for that.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve those appointments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Lunt?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, that motion carries. And thank you. And with that, we will now adjourn if we can get a motion to adjourn and then move on to the town hall meeting portion this evening's show with 15 minutes meditation.
That's crazy. That's amazing.
Record.
Yeah.
It's all David's fault.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn and move into the town hall meeting.
Okay, a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Lunt.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Wow, that was like lightning. We should do that all the.